We'll get started since we're right at 4:30 and I know we have probably more content than an hour. Call this pre-council on the Police and Fire Pension Review Committee report. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is at the back of the chamber. Welcome our guests from Kavanaugh McDonald. Pat, go ahead and take the reins here. And we'll hold questions until the end. If we could maybe leave 15, 20 minutes, does that work?
I think that'll work, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, if you have questions jot them down so we can come back and cover them.
John can probably come up with at least 20 minutes worth of questions, but we'll hold him to somewhat less than that.
All right. So as Trent said, we're here really to review with you the cost information that was in the Pension Review Committee's report. And you should all have a bound presentation in front of you. We'll wait just a minute.
There's one coming.
Okay.
Yes, one.
Everybody have one? Anyway, just a reminder, so the Pension Review Committee's task was, you know, to really, to look at the pension issues on the Police and Fire retirement system and kind of report its findings or recommendations. The current plans, what we call a defined benefit plan, so the amount of monthly benefit is what is defined. That's pretty typical across the country for public safety members, especially groups of public safety that are not covered by Social Security. So they have no other defined benefit coverage. We valued these changes as if they were enacted immediately, actually back in, for the 2015 valuation. Obviously, there are, you know, constitutional protections for any kind of benefit changes and negotiations that might be required. So the timing of implementation might be slightly different. What we're trying to get here is a comparison of sort of ongoing costs under a variety of plan design changes. So on page three, again, our work with the committee was really kind of supporting them. They came up with the ideas. We ran the numbers. And what's listed on slide three is what we're going to talk about today. Oh, I have a bad copy. Let's back up. Sorry, Brian. I apologize. There's a really important slide here because this is the one that goes on my tombstone. C plus I equals B plus E because I've said it so many times. So when we, when we look at pension funding, there's really only two sources of revenue that pay benefits, right? Contributions and investment income. So when we look at trying to reduce cost, the C component there, we either have to increase investment income, which is very difficult to do, or we have to look at the right side of the equation, and expenses are very small. So we're looking at things that change the benefits that are paid out, okay? And in the one scenario we'll look at, I actually changes kind of in a, you have, you guys have a unique methodology there. You got one. All right. So I apologize for missing that. So money in equals money out. And again, if we're trying to lower the cost, we've got to look at the right-hand side of the equation as well as the left. So the committee came up with really six different options, and that's what we want to cover with you today. The, the really preferred method for evaluating the cost impact is to look over a longer period of time. I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
No, sorry.
Okay. Thought maybe I was off on pages again. Anyway, so we did a 30-year projection of costs that allows us to look at both the costs and the funding of the plan over that time and make different comparisons if we need to. Those projections have a lot of underlying assumptions reflected in them, so full disclosure. We're assuming all assumptions are met in future years, including the rate of return, that as people leave, Police and Fire members leave and they're replaced, that the demographics of those folks look about the same as recent hires. That the city puts the full actuarial contribution rate in. You might have noticed in the report, they all get to 100% funded at the end of the 30-year period because the assumption, the funding policy is to be fully funded in 30 years. And if all the contributions are going in, that will indeed happen regardless of the scenario that we're looking at. And then probably most importantly, this information, again, is for comparative purposes. We're not in any way trying to say what the contribution rates or amount's going to be next year, or 10 years from now, or 30 years from now. It's to be able to lay these side by side and compare and get an idea of the magnitude of the change. All right. So the first one we want to talk about is a comparison of the baseline, which means everything's unchanged. It stays the way it is. So the 13th check fund remains sort of a separate part of the trust and can only be used to pay the benefits for the 13th check. And as a result of that, you might remember when we were here last fall and we talked about the valuation results, there's a lower rate of return that's assumed because when the rate of return is above the assumed rate, a third of that goes to the retiree, the 13th check pool. So we're using a 6.4% rate of return for a rate of return on the baseline. The modified baseline folds the 13th check in with the regular trust fund. So it's all one fund, so there's no more, when the return's above the assumed rate, part of it goes somewhere else. So there's no gain sharing, if you want to use that terminology. So it's, we can use the seven and a half. It's all in one trust and we get to keep all the investment income. And the other side of that, of course, is the liability for the 13th check then has to be quantified and included with the other benefits that are in the regular fund. Okay? So most of the changes that we'll look at are going to be compared to the modified baseline. We'll make it real clear when we're not using that as a comparison, and help me remember that, Brian. So, just to give you an idea, and I wanted to mention, the investment return assumption is the single most powerful assumption that's used in the actuarial valuation. And a 1.1% change in that assumption is huge, quite frankly. So you can see the impact that this has on the valuation results. So the city's contribution rate decreases 10% right off the bat. That's sort of two factors working there. One is that actually the market value of the 13th check fund exceeds the expected value of the benefit payments. Remember how much the difference was? 14 million, okay? So we're bringing in more assets and liabilities. Okay, that, we have to bring in the liability for the 13th check, but we're bringing over more assets than the liability. So that helps the funding of the, of the plan. And then the other part, again, that's very significant, is the change in the underlying investment return assumption from 6.4 to 7.5. So together, that decreases the city's contribution rate, 10% of pay, right off the bat. And you can see for most of the period, it stays about that 10%. And at the very tail, when both lines drop, is when you're, you're fully funded. So all you have to worry about is kind of paying the ongoing cost for actives. The next page, page eight, same information, just looking at dollar amounts as opposed to rates of pay. Actuaries like rates of pay, but I think normal people probably relate to dollars. So with that change, the city contribution, had this been in place for 15, would have dropped the contribution amount for the city from just over 12 million to a little bit under 8 million. So pretty significant change. And then if we look at just the total contribution dollars over the entire 30-year projection period, that would reduce those by about 209 million. Okay? So really there, the benefits being paid out are not changed. So that C plus I equals B plus E, the right side of that equation has not changed, but because we're getting more in investment income, the contributions are lower. Any questions for, well, we said we're going to take those at the end. I'm used to, used to being a little more interactive. All right. So page nine, one of the changes that was considered by the task force was trying to sort of stretch out the career of the members so that earning a benefit over a longer period. So the current formula is you get 64% of final average salary when you have 25 years of service and you can retire as early as age 50 with unreduced benefits. So effectively, if you take the 64 divided by 25 years, you get a multiplier kind of per year of service of 2.56. So for the modified baseline, we basically said, we'll try to kind of keep it in sync with the current formula until they get to 15 years and then we'll kind of stretch out the second part of their career, and it'll be 2% for each year of service after 15. And the maximum benefit will be slightly higher. Now, anytime you make changes for current members, it's pretty typical that you're, you don't make any kind of a severe change for people who are close to retirement. They have, they have very little time to plan. So this may not be how it would actually play out, but for costing purposes, we had to pick, pick some criteria. So we said members with 15 or more years of service would be grandfathered under the current formula, and all other members would move to the new formula, and they would have to be age 55 to draw the benefit unreduced. So they could still retire at age 50, but if they did, they take a lower benefit to reflect the earlier commencement. So on slide 10, just to help you see kind of the impact that this would have, kind of over time on the benefits of the members, you can see the current formula versus the proposed formula. And if you went the full 30, you get a slightly higher benefit, but of course, it's starting at, at an older age. And for everything kind of below about 27 or 28 years of service, people are getting a lower benefit. So page 11, again, and this is just this one change, compared against the modified baseline. The blue line is the modified baseline. The red line is the change we're studying here, the formula change. Just a little bit less than a 1% decrease in the contribution rate. And the next page, you'll see the change in the contribution amount, about 400,000. And over the 30-year period, add all those up, it's about 25 million. Again, this is the modified baseline, so for both, we're using a seven and a half percent assumed rate of return. All right. The next change that was considered was changing that definition of final average salary. So the current formula uses the highest 26 consecutive pay periods, so essentially a, a one-year final average salary. And the proposal was to move that to a high three average, a longer averaging period. Generally, if salaries are going up, produces a lower final average salary. So again, we had to kind of consider how to deal with the people that are closer to retirement. So for folks who were already eligible to retire, they were grandfathered. There was no change in the provision for them. Those who were eligible for normal retirement, the age 50 and 25 years of service within the next 10 years, moved to a high two, which is kind of an intermediate step, and then everybody else moved to a high three. Okay? And then the other part that we added was that when that change occurred, no one would retire with a lower final average salary than what they had right before the change. Again, just trying to protect people for the benefits that might already be earned. Page 14, you have just an example, again, because we talk about these things kind of in abstract, but in practice, what kind of a decrease might that represent? And this is just an example, so moving from a high one to a high three, given that scenario on salaries, results in a benefit decrease of about 3.6%. If you, if you're coming through a period with very flat salaries, it's not going to save much. But if you're having sort of normal salary increases, it will result in a lower benefit. So page 15 shows you what the decrease, again, in the, in the city's contribution rate is, comparing the high three final average salary to the modified baseline. And the proposed three-year final average salary is the red line. It's about 0.67% decrease in the contribution rate. And then on the next page, similar to prior slides, you've seen the difference in the contribution amount. It's about 300,000. And over the 30 years, it's about 17 million. And I should mention, just if anybody wants to get creative, you can't necessarily add these savings over time to get the savings of a combined package. So that's just full disclosure. All right. One of the other recommendations from the committee was to eliminate the drop program. And just a little bit of, of a refresher there. So currently, in the plan, members can elect into this deferred retirement option program referred to as the drop when they're eligible to retire. And what that means is they're still actively working, but to the plan, it looks like they're retired. And their monthly benefit payment goes into the drop account. Okay? And then that drop account is invested by the member, and the gains or losses from that stay in the account, so the member's got that risk. But they basically, like I said, from the plan's perspective, it looks like they're a retiree because that monthly benefit's being paid. It's just going into the drop account instead of going directly to the member. And employee contributions are not required during drop. So this one was interesting, page 18, because we had to modify the retirement assumptions to reflect what we thought was reasonable for the drop being eliminated. And, you know, that's based on professional judgment, but our crystal balls are not perfect. So we definitely, you know, gave it our best shot. But when we get into these that change retirement behavior, we just need to recognize there's a lot more variability built in here. So based on this assumption, the decrease was 0.88% in the 2015. And again, if we look over the longer term, it's, it's under 6 million over the 30 years. It's not really a, you know, level dollar amount each year. Kind of get a little more savings initially and then it decreases. But it's not really a significant cost savings compared to some of the other changes that were considered.
And to Pat's point as well, like with the retirement rates, if we do see different experience throughout the period, like, like within all of these, that 5.8 could change, probably will change, and could even be slightly the other way to a cost, depending on how that assumption plays out. So if that is the big driver in this one, the retirement experience assumption, so.
Right. Certain ones are more sensitive to that. You know, when you change the final average salary, we don't expect it to modify retirement behavior significantly. But, you know, if you eliminate the drop, that, that could have some significant changes. And exactly how that's going to play out is just much harder to deal with. There was one change that we costed out that actually increased costs. And that was to add a compound COLA to the benefit structure. And that would be, you know, a 1%, so it compounds every year. It's 1% of whatever last year's benefit was. But it would only commence five years after retirement or the end of the drop period. And this would apply only to active, so your current retirees would retain the, the 13th check as their kind of COLA structure. And again, you know, we needed to have some assumptions to be able to quantify this. So we had to specifically make an assumption about how many people would elect into the drop, since that would affect the timing of the COLA. You know, now it doesn't really matter, but then it would, it would have an impact. And then once they elected to participate in drop, how long they would be in drop. So you can see there, based on some historical information that Paul was kind of enough to provide, on average, 80% of the members are assumed to elect into the drop for a period of three and a half years. And on those assumptions, page 21, the increase in the contribution rate is 0.79%. And again, that's compared to the modified baseline. So remember that the modified baseline has some COLA in there for actives. It has the 13th check COLA. So that's part of the reason that that increase is not as significant. And then on page 22, again, the dollars over the 30-year period, the total over that period, 23.6 million of increased contributions. All right.
And just one more point on that too, where Pat was pointing out the 0.79% increase in 2015 going to a 1% compound COLA. If you went to a 2% compound COLA, it's not just going to double because we do have that 13th check currently in there. It will be more expensive than that. So it's not kind of an additive here with the 1% to, you just double it, so.
Yeah, good point. The last one we wanted to visit with you about is perhaps the most complex of the studies that we performed. And that was, what would the cost impact be if new hires were, went into a defined contribution plan instead of the defined benefit plan? So you basically close the defined benefit plan to new members. And these numbers on the contributions, at least part of them, came from our instructions from the committee. So we assume that the city's contribution would be 9%. And then these folks would be covered by Social Security, which they are not now. So it would be another 6.2. And then the duty-related death and disability benefits would continue to be provided as a, as a defined benefit, you know, X percent per month. And so that would have to be funded, and that's the 0.85% of pay. So if you add those up, the total is 16.05. So that's for new hires going in, 16.05% of pay is what would be expected to their cost. The committee requested that we perform this comparison using the baseline, not the modified baseline. So again, we're using the 6.4% return for comparative purposes for this cost study. So there, there's kind of two pieces to this analysis, which is what makes it a little bit more complex. And that is, we can look at new people coming in and we can say, what's the cost in the defined benefit plan for those folks? And what's it cost in the defined contribution plan? Kind of compare those, those two. But there's also another cost, and that's what we're trying to kind of get to on slide 24. Once you close the defined benefit plan to new members, you've made a fundamental change in the, in the funding dynamics of that plan because there will be no new people, the payroll will change, the asset allocation will have to change over time as less and less of the liability is for active members and more and more of it is for retirees and people in pay status. It's kind of like as individuals, our investment horizon and our, our asset allocation and our risk changes from the time we're Brian's age to the time you're my age, and then beyond that. And that's what we're kind of getting at here. On an ongoing plan, it sort of has an investment horizon that's indefinite, and it can invest for the long term. But as that timeframe gets shorter, it can no longer invest for the long term. So 30 years from now, it can't invest the same way it is now as far as asset allocation. And that has an implication on the expected rate of return. Because the more conservative your investment portfolio gets, in general, the lower the expected return is. Now, exactly how this plays out and when the changes are made and how they're made, and we don't presume to know that. But we pretty strongly feel that if we don't try to model it, we've misrepresented the cost of moving to a defined contribution plan. And that could violate actuarial standards of practice with respect to communications. And we don't want to do that, besides being a more, sort of a moral issue there. So we had to make a, an assumption, what we started with, again, this was the baseline. So we started with 6.4, and we, we kind of looked at how the cash flows would change and how more and more is being paid out in the form of benefit payments and less in contributions. And kind of looked at the breaking points at when that made significant changes. So about 2030, it looked like there might be a change in the asset allocation, and another one 10 years later, about 2040. So the numbers you see have this change. Remember, C plus I equals B plus E. So for this part of it, on the DB plan, the defined benefit plan, we're saying I is going to be lower. So the benefits haven't changed, so the, the contributions are going to have to be higher to make up for that. So we have really kind of two components of cost impact that are getting rolled together when you look at the numbers in the next couple pages. And this assumes that, again, when we did the 15 valuation, we built into that the, the changing assumed rate of return over time. So we didn't wait 10 years and then you get a big bump in the cost, and another 10 years, another big bump. To smooth it out, it's all sort of baked into the numbers. So again, the, the regular baseline is a blue line. The new hires into the DC plans, the red line. And in the 2015 valuation, that difference is over 5% of pay. And then over the, in the slide 26, again, the nominal dollars over that 30-year period from both of those cost impacts is just over 78 million. So the last two slides are really just the summary, and I really wanted them all to be together, but because they don't compare to the same baseline, didn't feel comfortable with that. So on page 27, these are the comparisons that were with the baseline. Okay? Again, with the 6.4 sort of net return. And again, this is looking at nominal contributions over the 30-year period. So the first one is if the 13th check is merged in with the regular pension fund, that's the $209 million of cost savings. And then the other one we measured against the baseline was the one we just looked at with new hires going into the defined contribution plan. And that one increased costs 78 million. And then page 28, these are the other four that were measured against the modified baseline. And you can see, and these are the same numbers we looked at for each one, but modifying the benefit formula was about $25 million of savings, moving to a high three on the final average salary with 17 million, eliminating the drop about six. And then, of course, providing a 1% COLA actually increases the contributions about 23.6 million. And again, you can't, can't just add them to see what the impact would be with multiple combinations of these. The committee didn't really ask for any combinations. I think they thought that discussion would come further down the line. I think they thought that discussion would come further down the line. That covers the material we prepared, and I'm sure there are questions.
We got thirty minutes for questions. We'll start with John.
Okay. As we were talking before the meeting, Pat, and you'd mentioned the investment assumption is substantial in all of these calculations, and you're assuming that seven and a half percent or whatever the assumption is under each approach will be met over those thirty years. If we look at this last general comparison, I'm going to phasing out the defined benefit plan with, you know, everybody that's in it stays in it, going to defined contribution with new hires. As we talked, nothing was ever done with the pool surpluses there. So you went with a six point four percent assumption.
Right.
And so I know that was your directive, but if you, and you came up with the defined contribution costing seventy-eight million more. So I have a couple of questions. One is, if you ran it out sixty years instead of thirty, wouldn't the defined contribution get considerably less expensive than the defined benefit? Because you're only sixteen point oh five percent contribution?
Well, I don't, I don't think so. The, the, if we kind of break these pieces up, so the, the normal cost on the ongoing plan for the DB, we just think new hires right now. Because you can kind of say, at the time you make the change, you have an unfunded liability, and you're kind of on the hook for that, and you got to pay the cost for the current members either way.
And that's paid off in twenty-nine years.
Yeah. But you, you pay it under either scenario.
Yeah.
Right? So then, the only difference is the cost for new people, whether they're in the DC plan or the DB plan. So again, based on the six point four percent assumption, that cost for new people, even at the end of this period, is thirteen point seven seven percent. Am I right, Brian?
Yep.
And the cost for the new people in the DC plan is still over sixteen. See what I'm saying? I'm on, you guys have your reports?
No, you're in your report or on their major report?
In, in the committee's report. I don't have that level of detail in the presentation.
Yeah, and where in there are you? Which you?
I'm on exhibit one, page one.
Okay. I guess, you know, I mean, in thirty years, everyone's going to be retired out.
Right, but on the ongoing, so we're comparing the scenario where the, the plan continues to the-
They're still paying retirement benefits, but won't you have it fully funded at the time they retire?
Right, but you're still paying sixteen oh five for new people coming in, right?
Yeah, and that's going to be a lot less.
No, it's, that's what I'm saying. On the ongoing, if you keep the DB plan open, those folks are costing you less than fourteen percent of pay. If you, if you look at column four-
Okay.
Okay, so that's the, the city's portion of the cost, if we don't change anything.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So if we go to eight thirty-one, twenty forty-four, which is the end of the, the thirty-year projection period, it's almost fully funded at that point. The cost for new people coming in after that is, is thirteen point seven seven.
But no, okay, but if you went to the defined benefit, no one's coming in.
Okay, that's, that's the other set of numbers. And so when we, we go, well, I, I'm having a hard time talking here. What we'd want to compare that to is a sixteen oh five in the DC plan. Let's say they're both, at that point, they're fully funded. Am I missing something?
Correct.
Okay. We're, we're fully funded thirty years out.
Yeah.
Okay?
So no more money needs to go into the defined benefit.
To pay off the old amount that they owed, the unfunded liability. There's still money that would need to go in. So if we hire the same person at the same time, like, this is a DB person, this is a DC, you're putting in that thirteen point seven to fund their future benefits either way, whether they're going to get a defined benefit, benefit in the future, or defined contribution, what they're putting in.
Well, you've got two increments. You've got the normal cost, which is over their life expect, their career expectancy is eight, thirty years. So we start now, thirty years from now, that normal cost is fully funded, they retire. And if you funded the past service liability, unfunded actuarial accrued liability, that's funded in twenty-nine years. So there's nothing left to put in for them. They're funded.
But, but we're comparing it to the plan where they're still in the DB plan.
Well, I'm just saying, just look at the, the-
Right, and it's almost there, if, if you look at, at the, like, column thirteen, I mean, it's, it's pretty close to sixteen oh five.
Mm-hmm.
Right? There, there's just some, there's some residual timing stuff going on because of the delay in your contribution.
Mm-hmm.
But, but the bottom line is, you still have a six, sixteen oh five percent normal cost rate in the DC plan, and in the ongoing DB plan, it's less than that. That's the comparison.
If you can earn seven and a half percent, year in, year out, forever.
Well, and this is six point-
Six and a half, or six four.
This is six four. The normal cost at seven and a half is lower than that by quite a bit, I think. Do we have that, Brian?
But the city's at risk for that interest assumption.
Right. It's predicated on the-
Versus the defined contribution, the city has no risk.
I, I agree, yeah. And that's difficult to quantify.
Yeah. And so you've got that. The second thing is, in this scenario, you're looking at exhibit one here, when you look at, you've got the baseline that doesn't merge the pool, the thirteenth check pool.
Right.
Does not.
Right.
If, and again, I know you were directives here, if you, to go to compare with a new defined contribution for new hires, keep everyone in the defined benefit that's there, to help on the cost, in any event, by taking the aura of that pool off, so you free up fourteen million dollars, that's going to make our defined benefit portion, under any scenario, less. Plus, you can go up to seven and a half percent interest assumption.
Right, and now, we looked at the baseline versus the modified baseline that quantifies that.
Right, and I'm saying-
But then, if you do the defined contribution plan, sort of against the modified baseline, with the seven and a half, then those numbers are different than what the numbers you see in exhibit one-
Right.
-in the report.
And I'm thinking, if the modified, but with a decline, with a frozen defined benefit plan, where you've got the advantage of now being able to utilize the surplus COLA funds or pool funds, and you go to the seven and a half percent interest. I mean, that's six point four going to seven point five is substantial. I mean, it makes tens of millions of dollars of difference over thirty years.
It, it does, but remember, once you've moved to seven and a half, on the assumption, the ongoing cost of the DB plan is lower. It's not going to be thirteen point seven seven anymore.
Right, but we, we phased it out, we don't have the, and I guess it's what's the cost of this?
But the say, I guess my point is, the savings are, are there. If you, if you merge with the thirteenth check, the, the costs are lower, ongoing or DC.
Mm-hmm.
And so then, when you compare the sixteen oh five, you're really comparing it against a lower ongoing cost in the DB plan.
But I think that initially, but once you get past that twenty-ninth year, then you've got tremendous savings.
I, I don't, I don't think so. Again, because of what you're comparing it to. So let's say, the normal cost was seven and a half, what do we have it, Brian?
Yeah.
The normal cost at seven and a half, the employer normal cost, remember, this is leveraged, because the members are paying eight percent of the total.
And they're only paying on average a six point seven right now, but anyway-
Right, it, it's going to grade up to eight.
In thirty years.
So the, when we move to seven and a half, the employer portion of the normal cost drops to nine point three percent. So, so again, think way out, when everything's funded, and so it's, it's nine percent under the DB plan, and it's sixteen percent on the DC plan. It's still more expensive. Now, you can say, well, it's nine percent based on seven and a half, and I agree, but that's sort of what we're modeling, under both scenarios. I agree with you, there's a different risk, but it, it's very difficult to quantify that. But at seven and a half, your cost for the current plan to the city is just a little bit over nine, whereas in the DC, it's, it's sixteen. Just, I mean, it, it has to cost more over time, because there's more money going in. And part of it is, you're paying in the social security, you know, six point two percent, and-
But that's an added benefit, then, that the police and firefighters would get.
The, I won't go political on that one. Some benefit payable some point in time.
I mean, yeah, the defined benefit plan is, is more lucrative than social security, obviously.
Yeah.
Much more, but-
But, but do you, I, I want to make sure-
Well, I see what you, I, I do and I don't, because, looking at the risk factor, I know that there are white papers out there, say, well, gee, over the next twenty, thirty years, some investment prognosticators say we're going to get seven and a half, eight percent, and we did in the nineties. But we haven't-
We got way higher than that in the nineties, though. In all fairness.
I, I, you look at the Federal Reserve's predictions and everything, we're just not going to be there in the risk. And I guess, I suppose the one thing that came out of this report that was interesting was the idea that we, instead of a, an employee contribution, it's a fixed percent of salary, that they get fixed percent of the contribution, for they share on the risk. Now, if the police and firefighters are willing to share on the risk, then I'm open to doing that. Right now, the taxpayers are, are doing that. And even this year, we're at most only up two million dollars, and we should be up about twelve to fifteen million at this point, in eight years into the year. So our hundred and three million's even higher. Again, yeah, just mathematically, assuming those investment returns and all, that sounds good, but what is reality, and what are we willing to do to the taxpayers? Because the taxpayers right now are looking at that hundred and three-plus-million-dollar liability, we're looking at our bond ratings going down because of that. So we have to do something. But ultimately, to pay those benefits, you have to have so many dollars. I just think when, there's got to be a moderation here of something that blends things in. I'll let someone else ask questions.
Jane?
Ken, I don't know if you would be the ones that would discuss it, or, or maybe it's Doug McDaniel's, about some of the other unions and, and the benefits that they receive that are comparable to our firefighters and police? Because is it customary to, to increase from that retirement age of fifty to fifty-five, and then, what other plans in our array are, that might be comparable, that have that final average salary, instead of that last year to three years, or maybe even those last five years? And then, how many other plans out there don't have? One of the recommendations, it looks like, eliminate the drop. And then, I, I was curious, how many plans out there actually still offer a drop? And again, of course, I'd, I'd like to see, like, how many other plans out there provide for that 1% COLA? Because I, that seems like that would be one of the trade-offs, maybe. I don't know, but I would be curious to see, in comparing other municipalities, how they, they handle these issues, if they want to stick to that defined benefit, rather than going to a hybrid that you're going to.
If you go to exhibit seven, page one, it goes through funding statuses, and assumed rate of returns, and employer and employee contribution rates, and how they determine a lot of that, the information, I think, that you're asking in the committee report itself.
No, I get that. No, I was just curious, what are, how do we compare and stack up to other municipalities? You know, I, I see how we can get some of the benefits and the cost if we add the COLA, but I was kind of curious how we compare to other municipalities.
Do you, do you have the committee's report?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think exhibit seven, there is a benchmarking study that we did.
I'll talk about police.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Too many pieces of paper, sorry.
Two, two different reports.
Right. And, and actually, at the very bottom, we kind of show either the average or the most common, and then we show Lincoln's provisions, so you can kind of hone in. For example, your question on final average salary, in this array, about eight or nine other systems, the most common was a high three-year final average salary. I think that's probably where the recommendation from the committee came from.
Okay.
And Lincoln had one. You can see the most common multiplier was, I'm on page two of exhibit seven.
Okay.
Most common multiplier was two point five for all years of service. Lincoln's just a little bit over that. But then you can see the, you know, the most common was to have a maximum somewhere around eighty, eighty-three percent, and you guys are at sixty-four. It's pretty common, there's some give and take on plan provisions, because everybody's got their own creative hat on, and, and different benefits are at times more valuable to different members. And I think on the next page, somewhere, we have drop, and we have COLAs. I know on page three, that has information on the, the COLA. So the most common was that, yes, there was a guaranteed COLA. And there is a lot of variance in these, but about one and a half compound was sort of the norm. And of course, the thirteenth check tends to be lower than that. And then, the drop provisions on the next page, on page four, and it was, you know, about half and half. It wasn't really a predominant, but in public safety, you see a lot more drop provisions than you do in kind of regular civilian plans. It's, it's pretty popular with police and fire plans. And again, those are at times designed a little bit differently. Sometimes, it requires employee contributions beyond, while they're in drop, sometimes it does not. And you can see on that most common line, it shows that, and this is not a huge sample, but the group that we had, that had drops, for the most part, required contributions during drop, even though they really aren't earning a benefit. It's to strengthen the funding of the system, and it's probably not a big surprise, given what pension plans have been through in the last ten years, that those provisions are in place. So I hope maybe that information, does that help?
It, it does, but I was thinking, are those the cities or the municipalities that are typically compared, that are in the array when, when the firefighters look?
That is a more loaded question.
That's a more loaded question.
Respectfully, since that's a purview of negotiations, I dare not to respond.
Okay. Mary?
You mentioned earlier that we have a unique methodology for determining our I, the investment return assumption. Do you mean unique in a good way, unique in a bad way? Help us understand what you mean by, you know, it seems like we are trying to get to not, not unique.
It, it's because of that provision with the thirteenth check pool.
Okay.
That, that's not particularly common, especially anymore. I would say, twenty years, years ago, when we kind of came through the nineties, and, you know, double-digit returns, and everything was great, everybody was happy, and we saw more of what we would call gain-sharing, that when returns were high, part of that got kind of siphoned off to fund a COLA. We don't see much of that anymore. And so that's what I meant by unique, that it's not quite as direct as it is for most plans. Because for most plans, to increase the I component of that formula by one percent is huge. I mean, if you could do that within the fiduciary limits, everybody would be doing that, because that's the easy way. You don't have to change the benefit side of the equation, you just increase I and you lower C. But, and that's why I'm saying, kind of that change from baseline to modified baseline is sort of an option that exists here, that, that doesn't in a lot of plans. Because they, they don't, they aren't, aren't, don't have that structure that you have in place now, where a portion of those returns above the assumed rate are going to the thirteenth check pool.
The grandfather provision that you mentioned, for the retirement age, how many people does that actually affect? How many people would be grandfathered staff-wise versus those who would adopt the new retirement policy?
Let's see, do we have the evaluation report that might help us? So I think, was that the formula change, and then moving to age fifty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Brian, fifteen or more years of service were grandfathered, so we should be able to come close in the evaluation data. Number and percentage.
So those with over fifteen years of service would be two hundred and seven, and there's five, five seventy-six. So about thirty-five percent would be grandfathered in that one.
And then, you know, as we're running these projections, as your current people are leaving, and you're bringing new people in to replace them, they're getting the, the lower formula and retiring at fifty-five. So gradually, over time, they're all moving to that.
Okay. And, and then the last question, sorry. Not as familiar with the drop program you're recommending, eliminating it. Not as familiar with the drop program you're recommending, eliminating it. What purpose does it intend to serve? It exists in other communities. What, what, what purpose is then not served if it goes away? Can you help those of us who are less familiar with it, understand what we are trading on?
So the drop program is for folks that are at years of service at 25. And basically, what it allows them to do is to continue to work past the 25-year service mark. And while they're in that 25-year service mark, they are earning their salary, they're deferring their pension, and they're contributing. Am I saying that right, Doug? They're, they're contributing into somewhat of a self-directed IRA for the next five years of their service. So there's no pension contribution coming from them after 25 years of service. They're vested, they're continuing to stay employed. Did I hit that right, Paul and Doug?
Uh, yes, other than the 25 years also require age 50.
Yes, they have to be 25 years and age 50. So eliminating the drop program, basically, you'll have management or guys that have been in, in flyer police service for a long time.
Or girls.
Yeah, girls.
And they are essentially working into contributing to their own self-directed retirement plan while not contributing to the pension as a whole. So beyond 25 years, they're not cutting a check to this plan, they're cutting a check to their own.
And so when they actually do leave service, then they can do what they will with that money?
Yes.
So it can be a big bonus, the retirement policy.
Well, they can roll it into their own IRA. I think right now, it's a managed fund for them, somewhat like a 401K for any other person, so, but they take it with them. It could be a pretty substantial amount of money, because typically, those, you know, 25-year service, 50-year employees are at the top of their wage and earning a fairly sizable amount.
Yeah, they're well over $100,000, probably $120,000 a year at that point.
So eliminating the drop plan, while it was a recommendation of the committee, it wasn't one that we were, with a $5.8 million difference over 30 years, it wasn't one that we were jumping up and down and being excited about. But it didn't make it into the report as a recommendation.
And are you saying that if it's dropped, then that $5.8 million, that, that, are there contributions made to the pension fund instead of going to these individual IRAs? Is that, or?
No, um, it would be-
Do they stop working?
They would, they would be, they would stop working at that point. We would not have a place, you know, they would either end their service or, yeah, we'd probably end their service, right Doug? At 25 years and-
I think we actually made an assumption on how that would change behavior.
Yeah, on changing people that would be retiring at 25 years and 50.
So some will still, I think, retire when they hit 25 and 50. But the thought was, I think, that, you know, there's certainly some people staying beyond that now. And so some percentage, you remember what that specific assumption was? Some percent would continue. That's where the, you get a little bit of savings, but like I said, if, if they all say, no, I'm just going to retire as soon as I hit 25 and 50, then you don't have any cost savings, because that's sort of what's happening now. From the valuation standpoint, whether they go into drop or they retire, it's the same, right? Because the benefit's being paid and we're not getting contributions. So if, that's why I said, if the member behavior doesn't change, if, if some people don't stay, then you really don't even have $5.8 million savings over 30 years. I think it's iffy or when you're trying to guess people's behavior.
We're about five minutes before a regular meeting. Do we have any other questions?
I guess typically, how has it been trending the last 10 years? Are, are you seeing, even with the drop in place, the average age of retirement is 25 years of service or more than 25 years of service at age 55, 60? I mean, are, are members currently or trending in the last 10 years, working up to age 60? Or, or are you seeing them actually retire at 50 and 55?
I think you have pretty high utilization with drop.
Okay.
Instead of about 80% who are eligible to go into drop. I don't know, Paul or Doug, do you want to add anything to that? Or has it been a trend over the 10 years, or is it pretty steady?
I think the trend in drop generalization would be the firefighters are retiring at a slightly earlier age and police are retiring at a slightly older age.
Okay.
Due to the drop providing them an incentive either to stay or leave older early.
I think Pat's comment was accurate, was the respectful utilization of the drop.
All right. Thank you very much. Good to see you again.
See you.